If you have no call, we will stand and do the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first up, please get over everything and vote for public work.
Does it agree with any changes to the agenda?
Any changes?
Did you have any proclamations?
Uh, no, no.
Okay.
So, we're done with adopting the agenda and review proclamations. Next up, Thomas from Citizen. Okay, Citizen, please take Thomas. Terry Dunn, who will close that portion of the session. Public Works, we have an activity report in our packet. Anybody have any questions or comments on the activity report?
Wheel loader looks really nice.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, streets, purchasing summer over late. We have some bids in our packet. And for once, APAC is not below. Surprise, surprise.
We, uh, we sent the packet out to the five companies that are listed there. We received three bids back. The lowest and we think the best bid is Christiansen Construction at seventy-four dollars and seventy-eight cents, a ton APAC and, uh, frac, frac paving, also bid but they were higher. Uh, so the staff recommends awarding contract to Christiansen.
What was our bid last year?
Sixty-eight-ten. So it's, although, you know, that was, that was significantly lower. Actually, I haven't looked at the bids from last year, but I understand that they were significantly lower than that.
We were affected and not being that role.
Yes, and this is lower than the price we used for the estate.
That sounds good. Anybody can make a motion?
Can you make a motion to accept the, uh, the Christiansen construction in the amount of seventy-four dollars and seventy-eight cents per ton?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anybody have any questions or comments? All who's favorite, uh, favorite say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Terry Dunn, motion passes.
Could, could you turn the overhead on real quick? Got out quick early in the, uh... We received eight, um, qualification and letters of interest for the, the grant that has been awarded to us by MoDOT for the Jefferson Street Sidewalk Project. Uh, among the bids were Allstate Consultants Engineering Surveys and Services of Columbia, both out of Columbia, Bartlett West from Jefferson City, also MECO Engineering out of Jefferson City, Cochran from Camden Town, CFS from Kansas City, and then two additional firms from Jefferson City, Riddell Engineering and, there we go. Riddell Engineering and Lubert Engineering. So, the first round scores you see here, um, we selected, we chose four firms to interview for a second phase. Uh, the top four firms scoring in order were MECO, Bartlett West, Lubert, and Engineering Surveys and Services. Uh, in the second round, uh, we just went over the scoring today. We brought in all four of them. They each gave a presentation and then finished the scoring today. The highest score, uh, was MECO Engineering and on three to one vote, they were approved, or they were the recommendation from the committee, which was consisted of Tim, Frankie, myself, Don Borman, Phil Hoffman, and, uh, also, and Alderman, Landon Magley. Uh, highest score goes to MECO Engineering. Um, the Missouri Department of Transportation, um, goes by the scores, so, um, the recommendation of the committee is MECO Engineering. The, the project is a little bit behind the schedule set out by MoDOT, um, going out for a, a, um, full bid process and also not getting it out right away, which was my fault, slowed the process down slightly. Um, we would actually bring the contract back at the next meeting and that would, then we'd be set to go with the, uh, we'd be able to release MECO in the, uh, design phase. Uh, so what we need for, from the committee is a recommendation to accept that, uh, A motion. Motion to accept that recommendation to prepare an ordinance to grant them a contract. So moved.
Second.
Oh, I guess the chair actually asked for it.
Why do you guys like to get out?
Make a recommendation. Ask for it.
All who's favorite say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Alright. Anything else on that?
Not have anything else. Uh, I will bring you back a, when we have the contract, I'll bring back a schedule so you can see the, the remaining steps. Uh, we are not in any way, I don't think, in jeopardy. I don't think we're in any jeopardy of not having this ready for construction in May of next year. We've got something much later, well, a little bit later, but...
Alright, next up, wheel loader purchase.
Wheel loader. We budgeted forty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars for the purchase of a wheel loader. Wheel loader is outside. I'm asking that the council give me the authority to spend fifty-five thousand dollars on it. The reason being that we received thirty-six thousand dollars after all the fees were paid for the sale of our previous wheel loader. Uh, we're not spending all, uh, and that forty-four thousand was assuming a fifteen thousand dollar trade-in and a higher cost for the wheel loader. So, I thought our net cost of the wheel loader was going to be about one hundred and thirty-two thousand. That was the full cost of the wheel loader. So, it will show us going over budget in that line item, but we also have more than offsetting revenues. Uh, this is, this, there might, I, I didn't want to go as high as spending all of that money. Just, I don't know, maybe I thought it was enough to ask the council to go a little bit beyond the budgeted amount. But I think this would leave us with two payments of, uh, right at forty thousand dollars, just a change, a couple of dollars over forty thousand dollars for the next two years. Possibly, we, we have no penalty for paying it off early. So, if, if things go well, we might be able to pay the whole wheel loader off next year, which means we free up funds for dump trucks and other purchases that we need to make. So, um, what I would, what I'm asking for is a motion to give, grant me, allow me to spend, put fifty-fif, for the city to put down fifty-five thousand dollars on the, uh, the wheel loader this year. In excess, which is, exceeds the budgeted amount by ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Terry, make that motion? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All who's a favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Um, in, in your packet.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. Would, uh...
Alright. Next up, sanitation.
I'm sorry, yes, yes. Uh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, we have our, you know, our packet, a report of, of our, uh, cost for cleanup, I assume?
Those are our direct costs to dings. I would like to add that we also spent sixty-four out, we had paid sixty-four hours of overtime during that period, uh, to, you know, fill staff because we're staffing the area. We don't stack the area, all kinds of waste that are man from, manfills and Phil can give you more history on that. So, the total amount of tonnage, uh, was it thirty...
Thirty-eight point three eight tons.
Thirty-eight point three eight tons is less than average week.
It was very likely, yeah.
Yeah.
That's one of the smallest we've kept in, that's...
Yes.
The smallest I've been following on record. Even, there's some of the spring cleanups when we had it twice a year. The next thing I'm going to show you is a, uh, actually, to turn on the overhead, the, the next thing on the, the agenda, it, the, kind of follows right along. What we're seeing is more and more people, you know, that every week is, um, spring cleanup week, household by household. We have, um, a number of, um, we have, we have, it has become pretty ordinary to, um, put out large piles of trash. I'll show you. These are some kind of, this is kind of putting the two, uh, items together. Phil, did you want to narrate any of these files? This is...
I mean, this is just getting me pretty difficult. I mean...
Seriously?
Yeah. Well, that's actually, out there at the Sunset Gardens, but they've got like three or four, four roll-offs. Roll, or the trash carts there and there's, it's piled around them like that. That's, and that's just there.
This is a commercial thing. Uh, this is, this is a commercial customer. We're in, we're transitioning from one business to another. Uh, and so we're not even sure, we're gonna, we're gonna bill the owner that is, that is being read out. And for one, we, you've given us the authority to charge for an extra pickup. The stuff outside of the dumpster is what we're charging. We are, although that, I don't think anybody could have fit all that in one dumpster. We're calling that a request for an extra pickup. Yeah, I think that's...
It's a hard to cram in there.
Yeah.
You had a mini excavator, you'd break, cram it all in, everybody knocks it out.
Uh, this is a residential pile.
That was just a day.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
These are all, none of these were on, were during, uh, cleanup.
Wow.
Aren't they supposed to nice piece or put cans or something so you don't have to pick up all these individual pieces?
There's an empty can sitting right next to that.
Was it, is that...
That's today, yeah.
And they, they set the empty can out next to the...
I, I didn't look in the can if there was anything in it. I don't, I don't know. I'm very cold.
Those folks are moving. That's the last one. So...
This is how you get a city survey where they mark trash as the absolute... Love us the most.
We are, they are loved and abused. So, this is, this is, this is a subject I brought before, so I, I'd like to bring an ordinance forward in the next, uh, couple of months to have a charge of, if, for special pickup. Now, as you said, this person right here, what was it, they're moving out? Well, that may be, and if you need to get rid of all that trash, and if, so if you move in September, that doesn't make you a bad person, but we don't have a cleanup time at that point.
Right.
So, I, I just don't think it's, you know, really fair. Uh, and some people, and we've, we've had, um, people who've done this more than once in the same, the same year. So...
Are they having their friends from out in the county bringing their trash?
We have not tried that, you know, I mean, without the, into the bag or whatever, and stuff like that. Sometimes we thought...
Uh, if I took pictures last week, you would think so?
You'd like that, wouldn't you?
I think it is. Last, last, probably a year, year. Last, last week, we were filling a truck up, getting the other truck out, just to finish one day's route. That was all week. It's for both big trucks, so it's not getting any better.
Well, I could have the trouble to take it out there and, yeah, pick it up right there.
I was saying, we didn't even get a week's worth of trash.
Right.
Out there. We spent over five thousand dings plus another, another couple of grand or more on overtime and we're, we're wasting our money and time out there.
Well, that's kind of what I was wondering. I mean, if people are expecting to pick it up there and they're not being charged for it, why haul it out?
Exactly. That's, that's kind of what we're getting to.
So, I'm thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of a minimum charge of fifteen dollars for a special pickup and then, you know, what...
Now, what do you call a special pickup?
Well, more than two cans. More than two cans, yeah. More than two ninety-five gallon cans.
I think that's an error. So we'd be a limit on how much, I mean, or some, if you get a truckload.
Well, I, I think that, then, at that point, the trick becomes to, do we charge, do we try and charge by volume, which would be very difficult, or do we just sort of charge by the amount of time we spend there? You know, I'm thinking additional five dollars for every, you know, for each, you know, if they, if they're there for, they come and pick it up and they get it all in the truck in ten minutes, it's fifteen dollars. And then for every additional five minutes, it's an additional five dollars.
And I think that'd be a logistical nightmare trying to keep track of that.
Do we require some evidence?
Yeah. And then you're gonna have people complaining, uh, I timed them, but they were only there eight minutes, you know?
Yeah, you're gonna have to, I don't want to run out. Stop watching.
Plus, whatever Phil is doing, they're gonna call him also and give his guess, but, so...
I'd say almost just a flat rate.
As much as you can put by the curb?
Do what?
I mean, what, what is the volume?
No, no, I mean, after, you know, you say like two ninety-six gallon carts, any more than that is X amount of dollars, you know? Or whatever you're, we're seeing is the amount. Anything that's a special pickup, just X, X of amount regardless of its...
Well, how do other cities do it as far as what, all this loose stuff that's there?
That's, I...
Which is most time consuming.
Well, I know that, uh, I know that, um, Fulton was fifteen dollars plus, and you got fifteen minutes, I think, of their time for fifteen dollars and then a dollar per minute after that. And assumption that, that you had to make it some sort of, uh, that's where I came up with the time. The more time they spend there theoretically, the more waste there is. Um, and unfortunately, depending upon who's on the back of the truck, you might have, you know, GoGather versus somebody who's not feeling well that morning, or the same guy with flu one day, or it's, or it's snowing and raining one day. But, uh, so there's no, there's no perfect way to do it. I know that, uh, beyond that, I, I, I don't know exactly what the, how people charge for special pickups. I could get some more, some more ideas like that.
I'm thinking that in Columbia, there is required to either be in a cart or in a bag in order to be picked up.
Yes, that's the...
I'm not sure if we want to go that far, but...
They, and they don't necessarily follow the rule, but there comes a point where the trash guys say, this is ridiculous.
Right, here's an idea. If you got trash outside of the containers, that's an additional charge. I mean, whether it's this less or, you know, an extra bag laying out there.
Well, like, I don't have a container. I just have two trash bags that I set out every morning.
Sorry.
That's like the pickup. What, what do you say? Fifteen dollars extra?
I was like, I, I mean, I just set out two, two to three bags every week. Like, I don't have that much trash.
Yeah.
But they, but they...
So I don't have a carton.
But they are in bags. Well, Columbia allows bags also.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're not requiring anyone to buy a cart yet.
My question is how... I don't know. I, I have four kids, so we create a tremendous amount of trash. I have two big dumps, two of the big cans, and my trash doesn't fit in there hardly any week. Uh, the other thing I had is I was luxurious enough to get two photos in that photo op there.
Nope.
And so...
Well, it's never done.
My, uh, my business is a construction company, um, but I can't take, 'cause I can't take any trash over to my shop and throw away. And so where my aspect is, is why am I paying your trash? So is there a way that if I'm not, I can't use your trash, so why, why pay your trash?
If you have trash service at the building, you can use, you can put the trash that's generated in that building in.
But there's no, nobody's there. I mean...
So you're talking about trash that's generated on our building site?
How many times have you picked up trash there in the last twelve months, Phil?
Oh, I, I don't know. I honestly couldn't...
I can tell you it's been less than five.
I don't say that. No, it's not. It's not every week. I didn't know that, yeah.
Well, the, and, and Darren, their state law says you can't take trash from one place to another place and, and dump it as it... So, so that, we're kind of, I understand what you're saying is you don't really need more than one pickup every... You have water service, but you have a very, very rarely used actual trash service at that business.
Right.
Sounds kind of like me.
It...
Absolutely.
And you generate trash, but it's an off-site.
Correct.
So, the, one of the, and I'm not, this made up, one of the reasons why we charge for trash service and we charge Andrea as much as the family that generate, that has four kids and generates...
Absolutely, but if I memorize, the commercial's different though.
It is, but, but, but it's the sanitation department and the, and the beginnings of, of trash pickup was to keep the, the city sanitary.
Interesting.
So, so even, so there is a benefit to Andrea that your trash gets picked up because it's just nicer, nice, even if she doesn't generate as much. Now, getting to an actual volume-based trash pickup, I don't necessarily want to try that in residence.
Right, and neither do I, but what I'm saying is, like, from my aspect, if I'm willing to, I would like to have city water. Um, but if I, I don't want your trash service because it benefits me not whatsoever. The only thing I get benefit of is writing a check for it. And so if I'm gonna have an off-site disposal unit at my building anyways, why, why should I, as a business in Centralia, have to pay for your trash?
Well, one of the reasons why you have, because there's two reasons. The reason why you have to have trash, you have to have water is because we have to have some, we have, there are people who will say, we never use the trash, and they do. And so there's trash set out once in a great while and they're not paying for it. So there's really, there, it's, it's very difficult to do a house-by-house audit.
I think he's just talking about the construction side.
Well, right, there's a, there's a re, this is why you charge trash ser, just at your building where you don't use it very often. Now, why can't you take it from the building site to your building? Well, the, that is, that's a state law. You can't haul trash from one place and use another site as a, as a dump site. Now, if you have it, you know, it gets, it gets pretty, in other words, you can't set up a, like, a mini transfer station. And that's, that's why you stance, that's why the rule's written like that. Even though in your case, what you're doing is taking trash from one, from your business, operating one place and putting it in a place where, in another place where you're operating your business.
Sure.
The same business. And there's really, it's very difficult for some, for us to figure out if it's your truck or...
Absolutely. I, you know, I didn't know it was a state law, so all, all these people that live outside in the country and bringing their trash to town and dropping it in their in-town dumpster at their business are...
They're, they're supposed to have trash service at their, at their city, at their...
Right, but if I live out here in the county and, and I'm bringing my trash...
There's a lot of people who do it.
Oh, yeah.
It's illegal.
Okay.
We've just never made a conservative effort to, to...
But, but you can have a building and not pay for trash. I, I don't pay for it up at my shop.
Right, but you don't have water.
But I, and the water turned off, yes.
Well, and you can get ridicul, I mean, you know, I mean, if I go to, to Sonic and do the drive-through, can I not take my trash, you know, put the car, eat the, eat the, uh, the food and then put the trash in my trash can here? Well, you know, you, you can reduce this to a ridiculous argument.
Right.
Pretty quickly, but the reason, yeah, you're not supposed to take trash from one site and dump it somewhere else and then get served by a trash.
Did you all pick that up today, Phil?
I, I don't know. I haven't been on that side of town, to be honest with you, Darren.
Is one of those from today?
No, those are, those are from past. Just happen to be some ahead, so...
I think I've heard a couple. I've, I've seen some huge pods out there. So we've, we've got, so we've, in concept, it is acceptable. It's just a matter of coming up with a, with a rate. Well, I'll take, do some research in what other cities are doing. And then, and then we'll, as, as the year goes on, we'll reevaluate how we want to do spring cleanup. I think there's some value to it, and now Columbia got rid of theirs years and years and years ago, but just about every other city does it. Uh, Mexico, Fulton, uh, Hallsville does, has, uh, has a, has a wheat. Um, you know, most, almost every city still does one.
I, I just, yeah, I, I think at the moment, we kind of have a disincentive to, uh, to use it.
Clearly.
Yeah, and, and it has been going down for a number of years.
It really, it really has.
You think we do it too early?
No, we used to do it, but we're, we're putting out less now than what we used to do in Tua.
I mean, we had, we had pretty good, we had really good weather this year. I mean, that, that really wasn't an issue, just, I mean, just, people just don't use it.
You mean, do it in May instead of April or...
Why not do that in the garage sale, the citywide garage sale?
It wouldn't matter.
That, that wheat will be horrible for us.
That's true.
Well, I mean, what, so what's the citywide garage sale? I forget the...
It's on the professor's, yeah.
So we have, yeah.
Surprise.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, you know, is that the week you put it on your...
Alright.
Okay, so, uh, I'll, uh, look at other cities and bring back a specific...
Anything else on sanitation, moving on to storm sewer or anything?
Um, Phil's, like, he's in the activity report. I'll be, I did have one question for you. We have a specific, we have one firm come and take a look at our, um, storm sewer issue. We have a price from them and we put that into the budget to do two storm sewers and get no chance in South Jefferson. I, I've talked to Phil. We're not sure how many other firms do that. I, I don't see how we don't go out for a, a bid on that. Is there, but if we don't, if I can't find, if none of the other purchasing agents around know of other firms that do that.
You know, what you're saying, we got there.
Okay. We'll either have a, an RFP or a request for, we're going with the, uh, with the bid that we got.
Right.
I can't remember any of the companies.
Central Pipe?
Where are they from?
Kansas City. They, they travel all over.
I always suspect there's somebody to take those too.
I, I...
I have no idea.
They may be with the same company. There are many companies out of Iowa, they just have different ones around and there's, there are not a lot of companies that actually do it.
That's kind of special, do work.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on your storm sewers? Any others on your public work?
I got one other.
Okay.
Last spring, we borrowed a paint sprayer from the city of Mexico. I think you've seen us have paint with it a few times. Uh, they finally got around and said they would sell it to us, uh, for twelve hundred dollars if we would be interested in buying it. And I would like the opportunity to buy it.
I think it'd be a good idea.
It, it saved us a, a lot of time and a lot of money on buying paint. It really did a good job. We couldn't buy a new one for even a pinch of that. They've got a brand-new, fancy drive-on machine and this one just sits and they haven't used it in years.
Will it take any less work?
Uh, I don't know. That was, he, I talked to him today and he told me what the, they had, uh, the company that they bought it from come stop by and look at it, tell them what they thought it was worth and, and I had talked to the guy too, 'cause he comes by my shop once in a while, and so I know what he, what he told them and he, oh, man, let, he told me even less than that, so...
I would say you'd probably all buy it, but...
I did have one real quick other public works. We did, actually took, San, city of Mexico, uh, Jim Sternberg from Mexico came over and worked with me and Phil. And we were out at Darren's project over there where he built, where he poured, uh, what will be Lockport Drive. We took three samples and he showed us how to rod it and everything out. We sent the samples down to ESNS and the first, they, they did their first, uh, break test. In other words, how much, how many p, pounds per square inch were required to break the concrete? And at seven days, which is pretty early, they, uh, registered thirty-three ninety, two thousand, three hundred and ninety PSI to break it, which if it's seventy-five percent of where it's going to be at, uh, it's, that's roughly about seventy-five percent of where it's going to end up, it'll be well over the four thousand PSI, which is a standard measure, so it looks like the street should be ready. And I believe we'll have everything ready to go May eighteenth to approve and start selling lots and everything like that. Is that right?
We're, we're, we're ready for you.
Okay.
All right.
So.
Fairly typical, so.
Right.
Sounds good.
Well, we're, we're mostly, I'm not, I, I'm saying we're trying to learn how to do a little bit better job. The contractor came with a high recommend-, you know, Jim from Mexico knew, it was a good, it was a chance for me and Phil to learn.
So they show you how to, uh, check grades and everything?
We didn't get into all those, those kind of details, so if you, I mean, the, the other question is, I mean, if you, I think for, uh, future would be to decide whether or not. You know, we want to ever go towards having a, you know, a professional come in and do all those tests for grades, for, for, uh. Multiple, uh, we took, we did a small test and we did a, a break test. And ideally you're out there, you pour it on three consecutive days, is that right, for?
Yeah, we did it on three days.
I mean, ideally you do it on each day from a couple of different points. It's about twenty-one dollars a test, uh, which is, you know, the test that Mike runs, uh, for me as a, so something for future debate, uh, future public works. It's whether, how we wanna proceed in terms of.
Maybe it's every hundred yards, isn't it? You're supposed to do it.
I, that you probably, no more, you do some more.
I think that's what Terricon does.
So at that point, we wanna see if there's, like, we've got a couple of different firms, Terricon, ESNS, I'm sure there are others that can do these services, but there's gonna be a cost. And then we have to decide whether we wanna eat that or pass it on. So, anyway, that's, that was just a recording that we.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Uh, next up electric department. We have an activity report. Do you have any questions or comments on the electric report?
Here to replace the light pole and the piano chants?
Yep, truck driver did it. Check it out, really good.
What?
Yep.
Did he have insurance?
I don't know yet, but I imagine, yeah, he has, he has insurance.
Okay.
They're waiting for a price.
Yeah.
I've seen.
I'm working on that. That's in progress.
Thanks. All right, next up boring project.
Did you, the pole out there by Casey's with the three transformers on it? Looks like it's bowling pretty good.
It's got a pretty good bow to it. I've checked it here recently and it's, I think we need to replace it in near.
See the heck of a mess it's broke.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think it's, you know, I mean, it's hard to know a hundred percent certain, you know, when you see a pole bone like that. It just at least gives you some concern, so. Some of the winds and things that we've had and it's still standing, gives me some confidence too in it. So, but it definitely needs to be addressed, all that. It has some weight up there.
Three transformers is a lot. All right, boring project. We have some information working out of packet, I believe, on that, don't we?
Well, I mean, we've got, we're, we're gonna, we have, uh, two contracts we're asking the, uh, board to approve in the special meeting. We have, we've been waiting on Kansas City Southern to complete their contract. They, the Norfolk Southern is done, their contracts are in the packet, and, um, we're gonna ask you guys to approve that at the full meeting. Norfolk Southern sent two contracts with each contract, okay, there's, there's two holes at each of two sites. And then there's two railroads. So we have a contract at each site, but when Kansas City Southern sent their contracts, they wrote them for one hole. So what we're gonna ask you guys to do in the next meeting is to approve the contract, approve the, the Norfolk, authorize the mayor and, uh. One of, the clerk or the, or mayor, I can't remember how Kansas Southern, I think Kansas City Southern only needs one signature, but to approve, to get, authorize them to assign a contract. Almost identical to the one that we have. The only thing that will change is that where it says one bore at each of the two sites, at each site. There are actually going to be two bores, which are described in detail in the Norfolk Southern contract.
Do you guys wanna change the price on that?
No, you know, it's still, it's, these, actually, these are the contracts for the permits.
Oh.
The permits for, um, uh, Norfolk Southern are substantially cheaper. Uh, forty-seven hundred dollars, it's in the packet, versus twelve thousand five hundred. Permits are cheaper.
Kansas City Southern must be, uh, more expensive. Have more because of labor out there, I'm sure.
Yeah.
They die, they're, yes, something like that. Their ground is just a little bit nicer.
Yes.
So, uh, but, uh, we need to pay that. So, um, the other, we are ready to go out for bid for the contractor, and we do not want the permits to be holding the process up. That bid will go out in the paper on Wednesday. We'll send it out to several firms, um, and, uh, BHMG is running the process. Uh, as, as we authorize them to do. The, um, bids will be due back on the twenty-seventh, and, uh, we'll approve a contractor. We don't want to have it held up. Sometime between now and then, the Kansas City Southern contractor will come back, and we'd like to move forward as fast as possible.
All right.
So that's, that's, um, it's, it's a little exciting for a boring project.
And any other under electric department?
Yes, I have one. Uh, out on Gano Chance, just, uh, Cobblestone Lake Estates, we've, we've extended our line down Gano Chance. And then for many years, there's been a line, uh, that runs on, or easement that's on CJ Cox property. That runs from basically the water plant all the way to Gano Chance. And a lot of that, most of that from Lakeview to Gano Chance has never really been in use, but it's always been our desire to tie that in to Gano Chance. The circuit that we, we just recently ran down that road. And so now's the opportune time to do that. It's just, we've tried to put in another short pole there where we have a guide pole. But it's just, we can't get the clearance from, that we need between what is gonna be our lines and Amherst's lines on the south side of the road there. And the only way to do that is put in a taller pole. Well, we can't, Amherst won't let us do that. They have to put in the pole with their specs and do it themselves. And so that cost would be, just a rough estimate is about forty-eight hundred dollars. So, and that's just their cost to put in the one pole and tie their lines to it at the height we need, then we can come in and build underneath. So it's something that, it, it does need to be done, uh, whether we do it in the somewhat near future, like in the next year or so. That would suffice, but it would be, uh, preferable for me to just be able to do that right away. But what I would need is the approval to, to spend roughly forty-eight hundred dollars is their, is their estimate right now of setting that one pole. Well. Right, it's just there. I don't know where that came from. I didn't. Right, yeah, with the water.
Yeah.
It's kinda like the railroad railways permits.
Yeah, so I assume that, uh, this, that got hit to our electric budget, uh, but probably not a very substantial one.
Yeah, yeah, not, as, like you say, not as extreme a substantial, uh, hit to it and in the, uh. Like phase two of Cobblestone Lake Estates was in the neighborhood of thirty thousand dollars to, to build. And so I think we'll be looking at somewhere in that neighborhood again for just what goes into the subdivision, so.
And a big portion's to tie in over there.
Right.
Yeah.
What's the benefit of tying in?
It just gives you a loop. Right now, we, we, uh, can feed that whole area, and now that it's grown more, it's becoming more important when we feed it from further, much further west on Gano. It comes down to dead ends. If you lose part of your circuit, say further west down Gano, near like Eastmont or somewhere in that neighborhood. Uh, and you isolated that to fix it, when you have no way to, to backfeed that area. And, you know, when you have maybe a dozen houses, you know, you still don't like to do that, but when you end up eventually with the amount of houses that they will have. You like to be able to isolate, maybe leave one block off, backfeed, get all that big area on, and then you only have one block of power out while you fix that area. So that's, that's what it really does for you, just, just.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to allow that?
Second.
All right. You're gonna motion in a second. All those favors, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, much easier.
Okay.
Um, one more really quickly under seven C now point two. Is there, does anybody have any objection to us, uh, declaring surplus number forty-one skid steer loader trailer? Which we have replaced it already. Uh, this is, Mark would like to auction it off. Uh, it is a two thousand one Maxwell model. That's typically what we would do, I just kinda wanna make you aware of that. Without objection, I would go for that.
Big problem. Okay, water and sewer department. Activity reports are in our packet. Any questions or comments? Okay, next up, uh, water department. Any other water?
They're gonna put the twelve-inch valve in unless hell freezes over tonight. It's going in tomorrow. So, Iron Burton North Street, the hole's dug out, where you're supposed to be here tomorrow before you can get it put in.
Is that kinda a nice square hole?
Been dug up four times now.
Yeah.
He's, they, they practiced.
They practiced.
They practiced that wall.
And we kind of got a, do we ever actually see if he, if he gets his twelve-inch valve or my house gets painted first? So they've been going at, we've been trying to get that about the same amount of times here. They power washed my house today, so.
I thought it was here to free, we need to paint the house.
I'm trying to sell.
All right. Well, after we've done anything else underwater, we will move on to the sewer, and I see that, uh, we have an irrigation agreement and an incentive form agreement.
Yeah, well, the, the, we're, we've got, I've been conversing with Alex Benoit and I, we. He gave me his phone number and I started to call him twice and got interrupted both times, so I don't have the additional information.
Okay.
But we do, he, yeah, we, we have made progress. We are discussing it.
One little thing to add on water, since everybody's picking on Cobblestone. I'm always surprised if they basically do the same thing that Mark's in. Twelve-inch line that we've been running up by twelve-five that didn't work out, and is now part of our loop. We're gonna tie the line in off of after the Lockport two, that twelve-inch line that's there, and that'll complete that loop. That'll be another feat. If something happened right now on that line, I would have to shut all the cobblestone off. So this gives us another way to loop that water in there without shutting everybody in the whole subdivision off, so. I definitely need you, I'll get some prices on that, everything at the next meeting.
And that's some of the reason why the, when we were going over easements, how, why we approached them. So we've, we've been thinking about this. Mike's been thinking about this for a long time.
Okay. All right, then the incentive form agreement.
The, uh, is he, Mike has, uh, secured, uh, price, and it's here in your packet, of forty-one thousand and.
Seven hundred and twelve dollars and forty-four cents.
Thank you. This is, yeah, seven hundred and twelve dollars and forty-four cents. This is the contractor who has already gone through a bid process with City of Independence. We're ordering off that. It is one thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and forty-four cents over what I, we budgeted. I just want the council's okay to go ahead and approve this purchase and move forward. It would be, we've got what, uh, ready to go on, um, east, not east, is it?
Between Eastlake and Briarwood, and between Dode and Bruton, and then there's just all the hell, just that run up into there.
All right, let's just look it in, so, so.
You want to run over the budget?
Oh, I under, I put down too small a number, which one of the.
Don't, don't let that happen again.
Yeah. It is.
Okay.
It's Michael. He said forty-five.
Okay, so do we need to take action on this now, or?
I like a motion. It'd make me happier.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
All those favors, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you're covered. Okay, any other under, uh, water and sewer department? Okay, any other? Any, has bear eyes? Yes, sir.
Is this where you wanted me to bring up about the fireworks again?
Oh, well, it's, yeah, go ahead. That's the, the, um, we talked about that, um, last week.
Yeah, and my understanding was you wanted, said tonight would be a better night, so basically I would like to see the city do away with.
Banning the sale of fireworks within the city limits.
Legal.
That would actually be better next week, but since you're here, we'll let you.
Okay. I'll come next week too, I guess.
Oh, that's fine.
They'll probably pick on Cobblestone's good.
That's okay. I'm kinda getting used to it. And then also, I know that, that's it, just make it legal to sell fireworks.
Well, I mean, I know that, uh, that we, we don't allow the sale inside the city limits. People go right outside the city limits, and I mean immediately outside the city limits, and they buy all their fireworks, bring them right back into town. My feeling is we might as well get the sales taxes, uh, as the county, uh, get in with dollars.
What was the original rationale?
Statistically from Google, the average person spends seven dollars and eighty cents per person on fireworks.
What was the original rationale? Was anyone around when it was me?
It was before my time.
It is typically been that the use of fireworks is dangerous, and because kids, once every year, somebody does something foolish, and.
Well, but being, so why be allowed to sell something if it's dangerous?
Except you would allow, except we would allow.
I've heard the rationale.
We, we do allow people to shoot fireworks in town, uh, not shoot, not rockets.
We're allowing to shoot it in town, so that doesn't. Right, so, so the rationale, so, so since the ci- city of Centralia allows you to do something, I cannot, look at the rationale, not to. Mary, Mary, you know, what, what was the original rationale for why they banned the sale of fireworks in town?
What was the rationale or reasoning for it?
Yeah.
No, that's all right. You can leave it like that, but.
Yeah.
Well, I think there was a different opinion about what, uh, what fireworks needed to be banned. And, uh, I mean, I think the, uh. What, what is banned is, goes along with what is, I mean, what can be sold is, or what cannot be sold is consistent with what is not allowed to be shot inside city limits. As much as, you know, as that. I don't, I don't recall the.
Have we loosened the researches on what you can use, concealer?
No, no, he's still can't. I, I, I do think that if we do allow the sale inside the city limits, we probably ought to require them to be posted, what is not allowed to be shot inside the city limits. Which would make sense.
At the sale location?
Which, which actually was something that, but isn't done now outside the city limits, but we have some control over.
So we're gonna buy something that's not legal in the city limits, but we're gonna go right across the city limits and buy it that doesn't say it's posted. Become right back into town and shoot them.
Yeah.
So why put anything and let them buy it there in town?
Just because we have a chance to, uh, make. Just because we have a chance to, uh, make it posted and saying, okay, bottle rockets are excluded from being used inside the city limits. People have no way of knowing that now, uh, other than the fact that, uh, most people probably know it anyway.
Well, how about we come up with a draft ordinance, discuss it next week's meeting, and then we can have it, you know, set up a straw man, get ready for... Is that all I have?
For conversation's sake, the state statute with respect to what you can do within X amount of feet at a fireworks retail outlet will cover, that, that's pretty clear. Can't fire it on a cannon and shoot it in. So, I, I think it's pretty clear. The question is, will out fireworks be sold in town, will that, and I have no idea, will that mess with our insurance rates in any shape, form, or fashion? And even if it does, how does it affect us? I think Darren is on to something about selling in town. And if you did that, then would you, if it's Magley's Fireworks and more?
What's the more?
Would, would he be required to buy a temporary business license?
I would assume so, because I'm assuming they have to do that in the county anyway.
Yeah, and provide whatever it is that you need to provide us. And so stipulate, yeah, could you, would you allow, say, I'm just using names. Would you allow Friendship Church to sell fireworks retail on Chico Deeper Friendship Places lot? There is that.
It has to be, yeah, probably.
Have to be in the business district, other than that, I, I consider having all the conversation we've had, we probably can it pretty quick.
I was just looking at, uh, Lee Summons has theirs online. Although they do allow sale of fireworks in the city, they limit the number of permits to sell. I don't know why, but they limit it to twenty, and of that twenty, nineteen are issued to non-for-profit.
Right.
Groups?
Groups. Groups, yes. Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts. Magley and More, non-for-profit.
That's the one for all of us, yes. I just want to know what the more is.
You have to find out fireworks, find out the more.
It's a single, it's a single thing, if the county goes north of town, and those folks are selling MAs, which are, which is a violation of state statute, then they pay the consequence. Then the same would be here in town.
The question is, do we want them to have a signage that says what, because we have a ban against, well, aerials. I think it makes sense.
I don't know if we have it done for this year.
It's not a matter of getting done for this year, but they probably don't have, uh, they probably haven't got contractual order set up anyways.
Well, right.
I, I think it makes sense for the general government, in what's a meeting, to have a draft ordinance look group. Uh, and with that being said, I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Uh, we have a motion in a second to adjourn. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, alright. Thanks gentlemen, guys, colleagues, anybody need a break? Yes, hey, Mike?
I'm changing it up a bit.
You have to stop some aerials and then go sit. Oh, yeah.
Give you room, he's gone.
I dropped the cigarette, I couldn't help it.
That goes back a long time.
Been with me all day.
It's offensive, you're going to find out, in the old days, it had something to do with fireworks. And water and, uh, hydroavailability, blah, blah, blah.
Oh, yeah, that sounds fair enough.
Alright, today we can call this, uh, special meeting of more moment order.
Alderman Horman?
Here.
Alderman Lane?
Here.
Alderman Matley?
Here.
Alderman Laura?
Here.
Alderman Ward?
Here.
Alderman Wilkins?
Alright, we have a quorum this evening. We've already said the pledge allegiance, so those of you that missed that can do that on your own. Alright. Is everybody okay with agenda?
Yes.
Action, agenda, finance, nothing, permits, license, nothing, that's all things. Legal, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Central Missouri to enter into two agreements with the Norfolk Southern Railway Company of Norfolk, Virginia, for permits to bore under the railway for the purpose of installing electrical conduit each for a fee of four thousand seven hundred dollars and no cents. Bore permit ordinance, requires two readings. Need further discussion? Kind of alluded to that last meeting. Hearing nothing, Alderman Lane, would you introduce this one, please?
Is it anything longer than what's printed on this?
Uh, no, I think that's it. Bill number?
Twenty-seven fifty-three.
I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-three be given its first reading by title only.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven fifty-three be given its first reading by title only, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Coats, continue please.
A bill authorizing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Central Missouri to enter into two agreements with Norfolk Southern Railroad Company of Norfolk, Virginia, for permits to bore under the railway for the purpose of installing electrical conduit each for a fee of four thousand seven hundred dollars and zero cents for permits and ordinances. I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-three be given a second reading by title only.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven fifty-three be given a second reading by title only, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Coats, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, titled authorizing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Central Missouri to enter into two agreements with Norfolk Southern Railroad Company of Norfolk, Virginia, for permits to bore under the railway for the purpose of installing electrical conduit each for a fee of four thousand seven hundred dollars and zero cents for permits and ordinances. I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-three be adopted by roll call.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven fifty-three be adopted by a roll call vote, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Coats, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Lane?
Yes.
Alderman Matley?
Yes.
Alderman Laura?
Yes.
Alderman Ward?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Ward?
Yes. Alright, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven fifty-three passes and now becomes ordinance number...
Twenty-eight eleven.
Next. Authorizing the mayor and city, uh...
Well, it's...
You're saying, you're saying that's the difference?
There is a difference in the, I'm going by, there's only one signature required on the, on the contract. I, my understanding is when they only require one sig.
That's true, that's true. The ordinance, which is it?
Okay, well, the ordinance is, would need to be amended then. It still says.
Okay. So authorizing the mayor of Central Missouri to enter into two contracts with the Kansas City Southern Railway Company of Kansas City, Missouri, each for twelve thousand five hundred dollars and no cents for permits to bore under the railways for the purpose of installing electrical conduit. Again, this is ordinance requires two readings. Need further discussion?
Is the, I mean, just make sure that we don't need to make amendments. Yeah, the, the ordinance does say mayor and city clerk, so, and somebody moved to amend that, just so that we get it correct.
Make a motion that we amend the, uh, ordinance to delete which one?
And, and city clerk.
And city clerk.
From the ordinance.
I have a motion to second to amend the ordinance as stated, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Alderman Wilkins, would you continue this one, please?
Uh, bill number?
Twenty-seven fifty-four.
I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-four be given its first reading by title only.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven fifty-four be given its first reading by title only. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute two contracts with the Kansas City Southern Railroad Company of Kansas City, Missouri, for permits for the purpose of installing electrical conduit under the railroad, uh, railways right-of-way, each for the fee of twelve thousand five hundred dollars and no cents. I move that bill number two-seven five-four be given its second reading, I'm sorry, I make a motion that bill number two-seven five-four, as amended, be given its first read by title only.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven fifty-four as amended, be given its second reading by title only, all those who favor say aye.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute two contracts with the Kansas City Southern Railroad Company of Kansas City, Missouri, for permits for the purpose of installing an electrical conduit under the railways right-of-way, each for a fee of twelve thousand five hundred dollars and no cents. I move that bill number two-seven five-four be given, uh, be authorized, uh, be adopted by roll call vote.
Wow. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven fifty-four as amended, be adopted by a roll call vote, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Coats, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Matley?
Yes.
Alderman Laura?
Yes.
Alderman Ward?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Horman?
Yes.
Alderman Lane?
Yes.
Alright, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven fifty-four as amended, be, passes and now becomes ordinance number... Purchasing and nothing scheduled? Alright, if, if it is okay with the, uh, board, I move that as may arise to report the closed session. I've got three appointments to make, actually, there are reappointments. Talk with, uh, Phyllis. She's spoken to Thelma Chandler and John Cockwitz for the cemetery board, and both have agreed to be reappointed to that position for a term of three years, starting May first. So first will be Thelma Chandler for the cemetery board. Want to make a motion for that?
To approve.
Approve the mayor's appointment of Thelma Chandler? Okay. Alright. I have a motion to second to approve the mayor's appointment of Thelma Chandler to the cemetery board for a three-year term, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Coats. And, uh, same thing for John Cockwitz.
Yes. I have a motion to second.
I have a motion to second to accept the mayor's appointment of John Cockwitz to the cemetery board, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Coats. And again, that is a three-year term. In addition, the final appointment I'm going to make tonight is the, uh, John Cockwitz to the tree board. Have not heard back if Josh, Josh Reeves wants to be reappointed yet or not, but, uh, I'll take that one next week. Uh, so I'd like to make the appointment of John Cockwitz to the tree board for a three-year term. I have a motion to second to accept the mayor's appointment of John Cockwitz to the tree board, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Coats. Now...
Yeah, do we make a motion to go into closed session? And during the meeting, the board of all crew may elect to go in closed session and hold closed vote, the purpose of such closed session and closed vote shall be as provided under section six-one-zero dot zero-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri for legal actions, causes of action, or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential privilege communications between the public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys.
Wow. Alright. I have a motion and a second to go into closed session, roll call vote, please, Heather.
Alderman Laura?
Yes.
Alderman Ward?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Yes.
Alderman Horman?
Yes.
Alderman Lane?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, we have a closed session. Are you all going back, you want to stay in here, we can take it, that's up to you all. Just go back there real quick. No, it's probably too sad. Everybody get me on the end table. Alright. Alright, we're back in open session. Alderman Laura, would you please introduce this one, please?
Bill number?
Twenty-seven fifty-five.
I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-five be given its first reading by title only.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven fifty-five be given its first reading by title only, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Coats, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, the ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute a mutual release and settlement agreement with Paul Morgan in the matter of the lawsuit filed by Morgan in Circuit Court of Boone County, Missouri, case number twelve B A dash C V zero-two-one-five-four. I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-five be given its second reading by title only.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven fifty-five be given a second reading by title only, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Coats, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, the ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri to execute a mutual release and settlement agreement with Paul Morgan in the matter of the lawsuit filed by Morgan in the Circuit Court of Boone County, Missouri, case number twelve B A dash C V zero-two-one-five-four. I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-five be adopted by roll call vote.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven fifty-five be adopted by a roll call vote, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Coats, roll call vote, please, Heather.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Horman?
Yes.
Alderman Lane?
Yes.
Alderman Matley?
Yes.
Alderman Laura?
Yes.
Ward.
Four. Alright, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven fifty-five passes and now becomes ordinance number...
Twenty-eight eleven.
As may arise? Additional as may arise? Um, I have one, that will be going to annual training, June twelfth through the twenty-eighth. Um, I have one. That will be going to annual training June twelfth through the twenty-eighth. I'll be, I'll miss the June, uh, meeting. The fifteenth, the June board of Alderman meeting, I'll miss that.
Order to push that one back to the twenty-second. Chance is not really that big here next week.
I'm gonna be gone that one too.
Yeah. Let's move it back. You haven't actually done that by motion, have you?
No.
We'll do that in the next one.
Okay. All right. Yes.
The MML meeting is the twenty-seventh. I've got a few here that have told me that you want to go. Anybody else decided they want to go? You know, it's in Columbia. Maybe get those, um, RSTPs sent out.
All right. Do we get anything else? Motion for adjournment?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion to second to adjourn. All is fair's act.
Aye.
Thank you very much.